On silence, please. We have the approval of the minutes of April 29th. Are there any additions or corrections of those minutes as?
Move it.
As we allow.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have the approval of the claims.
Move on the claims.
Is there a second?
Second.
A discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. I have the memorandum of personnel transactions. I'll send that around for signatures. I need a motion to receive it. Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, same sign. We have the one item there. Item four is the Board Administration, the approval of a resolution, tax suspension for FM. Move it. Okay.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay. County Treasurer, Mike Clayton, approval of resolution abating the taxes for JS.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item B is a resolution abating the taxes for United States of America. That's what it says here.
I know.
It's an airport vegan.
Is he an airport vegan? Okay. What if we don't do it?
Well, we won't get paid either.
Okay.
I could just assume we didn't have to pay taxes anymore.
Move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item number six is the Planning and Zoning, John Puelo. Want to come step forward, please, on this item?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This agenda item was last on your board agenda on the 16th of April, and we postponed approval at that time pending the county attorney's review of the documents that you'll be reviewing this morning. This issue goes back a number of months with CF Industries Nitrogen LLC. This is a scenario where, when we initiated the permitting for the, some of the structures and the facility in their expansion project, it created certain administrative challenges, both for CF and Woodbury County. We thought it was in the best interest of the county, as well as CF, to enter into an agreement which incorporates seven variances that CF and your board applied for with our Board of Adjustment, which were approved last February. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have regarding the agreement or the variances.
Just, John, I think this was an extensive process, particularly on your part in getting this thing put together and the work of the Board of Adjustments in reviewing all of these policies. Again, this is kind of precedent-setting because we've never had a $1.7 billion investment in Woodbury County of this type. So, we're really setting the groundwork for other commercial developments that might be of the same level, but I don't know if it'd ever get to that $1.7 billion. But it sets a precedence here and opens up the possibilities for a smoother transition when these companies come in and eliminates a lot of red tape that would have been created if we didn't have put this forth and taken care of it in this manner. Also like to compliment, you know, the County Attorney's Office for getting on this and expediting this thing so that we could get this thing put forward and make a decision on it today. So, appreciate that, Josh.
Obviously, we hope we have the challenge occur sometime again in the future, and we've learned a lot through the process.
Well, it's a good problem. It was a good problem for us to have.
So, the summary of this is, we're, how are we doing this? We're going to have one permit for a lot of buildings?
We're going to accept a master building permit application under the terms of the agreement, which will allow CF to construct all the structures related to their expansion. It will also encompass all the staging areas, lay-down areas of both CF and any of their subcontractors, anywhere they might occurrence in Woodbury County, as long as they are supporting this particular expansion project. The permit will involve a single permitting fee. It will be closed-end, and that it will expire within 36 months of the enactment date. And it does have certain suggested language by the County Attorney's Office that protect your board and the citizens of Woodbury County.
So, are they gonna keep up any changes in the plan?
Under the terms of the agreement.
Another building over here, another building over here.
Yeah, there'll be periodic updates of site plans and those types of things. There will be periodic inspections by the Office of Planning and Zoning in regard to the plant site proper, as well as all the lay-down areas.
I'd like, I'd like to echo what George says. John, you've done a great job on this. A lot of this was uncharted water, and I really appreciate the effort you put into it.
I appreciate that very much.
Move it. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I'll have my signature on it. Item number seven is RML Architects of Virginia.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I tried really hard today to be on time.
And you were. Thank you.
Today is regarding the security upgrades in electronics. There are some finalization to the paperwork involved with that project. We have a change to the master control room countertop, and there was a cost of $2,800 associated with that change. Also, too, there has been an increase to the storage capacity of the DVRs located in master control room, and there is a cost of $4,600 associated with that change. So, I'm here today to ask for your approval for these changes to the contract. As you can see, that will increase the contract amount by $7,400, and will be right around $705,000 total for our contract amount.
Larry?
On the increase of DVR storage capacity, it says this change meets the need for 30-day storage.
Mm-hmm.
Thought we were talking two years, or am I confusing it with something?
There's a little extra information there. So, this is existing conditions, and existing conditions, our goal was 30, 30 days. And so, in the future, we are looking at increasing that even further to two years. And so, that's the proposal that we'll be going forward shortly. Did that make sense?
Do we want? All right. I'm lost, Regina.
Okay.
I thought our next contract would be for the two-year storage capacity instead of 30-day. I don't know why we're doing this.
This work has already been done. So, this increase to the 30-day capacity is work that's already been accomplished in the current contract. And the, what was happening is the DVRs were getting us about 11 days of storage capacity, and we needed 30 days. So, this increase got us the 30-day goal that we needed to function currently. And so, you're right. The future proposal will include an increase even to this, from 30 days increasing to two years.
And when will we have that?
I'm hoping very shortly. I am waiting for HDR to give me their documents so that I can check them over and then distribute them. We have to advertise for that bid process, but as soon as those documents are ready, we can begin the advertising process.
Have you got a cost estimate on that?
I have some cost estimates, but I don't want to talk about that publicly because I don't want to influence the bids that we will get, if that's okay with you.
Okay. Any other concerns, questions from the board?
We're working.
For 30 days.
Moving on to change.
Second. Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you, Regina.
Thank you.
All right.
What you have before you is the change order number one for the work being done down at the Tri-View location. I tried to list those five recommendations out to you and give you a little bit more information on them. The building is proceeding nicely. Veterans Affairs is in the basement now that are going on. This would be their second week of being here. The HVAC work is being done as quickly as what it can to get them, you know, back into their.
Good.
Setting as soon as possible. So, hopefully, that will occur shortly. But otherwise, then the work is, seems to be progressing nicely, and there's always been somebody on site when we've stopped in to check and see how things are going.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move it. Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Secondary Roads, Mark?
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
First item we have is to consider award of the bid for the project for building CF Drive off of 255th Street. We took bids last week. The low bid, which we recommend award to, is from Lever Construction for $525,413.80.
Move it.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
I'd just comment on that. There were some rumblings out there. Not really sure where they come from, but they questioned our bid process and selection of a winner on this. And all bids are sent to this office the day before.
Yes, we require that all bids be turned in to the Office of the Public Bitter at 4:00 PM the day before everything is opened.
And they're opened at the board meeting?
That's correct.
So, for anyone to mess with the bids, it isn't happening.
No, it is not. One of the things that we did discuss with this project early on, though, was in our DOT qualifications. We required that each contractor who was submitting a bid be qualified as a G1 contractor by DOT. And that did eliminate some contractors who had requested plans that didn't meet that level. And that's a, that implies a bonding level and that they have successfully done projects that equal 500,000 cubic yards or more. And we did have a couple of local contractors that met that threshold as well.
Good. All right. Moving on. Item B.
Our next item was a bridge project. This is Bridge K-199. This is on Michigan Avenue, south of County Road D-38. We're recommending the award to Christiansen Brothers for $510,724.50.
Move it.
Second.
These bids were also sent in the day before.
That's correct. And this policy has been Woodbury County's longstanding policy. It was here before I got here, that bids were due in by 4:00 PM the day before the letting. The only projects that we open up at our office are the small bids and quotes that are in that $50,000 and underestimate.
Yeah, okay.
One thing I might mention about this is that these were above our engineer's estimate. If you'll recall, DOT saw a project that was, I think, almost $2 million higher on the Port Neal Road overpass.
Wow.
The initial project on the Floyd River Bridge on the interstate was not awarded because it was over budget and only had one bidder. I think we're seeing a trend toward higher structural costs on the west end of the state. I don't know if it's a glut of work this spring or what it is, but looking at the statewide trends as well, bridge costs are going up with structural concrete and reinforcing steel kind of leading the charge on that. In this first quarter, bridge costs are up over 8%.
And is that because of material costs like rerod and all that, and concrete?
Well, look at all the concrete that's going into the ground at CF Industries right now, and we're competing in that very same market.
Yes, you are.
Again, in spite of the bids in excess of our estimate, we are recommending award. This is a necessary bridge project.
Okay. Move it.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item C.
Item C is approval of plans for Project LBH-109. This is the 185th Street Bridge. It will be a 100-foot by 30-foot 6-inch continuous concrete slab bridge. This is the first project being let with the capital projects money that the board allocated, the $1.3 million per year. So, this is the first 2014 project.
Move it.
Second. Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Everybody got to sign this?
Yes, please.
Item D.
The second one is for Project LBL-136. This is the Pocahontas Avenue Bridge, also just south of D-38, but east of, no, D-22, east of Correctionville. This project will be a 90-foot by 30-foot 6-inch continuous concrete slab bridge. There'll be relocation of the existing bridge, which lays in a deficient curve on a downhill grade. Right-of-way is acquired. We're looking at a June 10th letting for both of these. This is the second bridge that's in the 2014 capital projects.
Move it. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item E.
Finally, we have a request for approval of an application to adopt a highway. The River City Anglers are renewing their adopt a highway application for litter removal along County Road D-25. This is between Interstate 29, exit 134, and Snyder Bend Park.
Move it.
Second. Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right. Mark, anything else?
We are working this week on improving our haul road on Allison, 235th and 225th. Last week, we suffered some rain delays, but we'll have calcium chloride treatment done along the south residences between 225th and 235th on Allison. We have everything done from 235th, the four-way stop down to the plant entrance. We'll continue to work on this for the rest, for the balance of this next two weeks to make sure we've got all those haul roads renewed for spring.
How's it seem to be going, Mark? I mean, does it?
We're dodging traffic. It slows us down a little bit, but.
Of course.
On a good day, the guys are getting almost a half-mile a day of gravel applied, and we're hauling with our own trucks. It's a little easy dodging them in among the traffic. The pull-outs are down. They're, they're starting to firm up nicely now. We've been rolling them. We rented a roller a couple of weeks ago. One issue that's come up that I'll write the board a brief memo on, at the intersection of 225th and Port Neal Road, when it's wet, we're having trouble with a lot of debris being pulled up onto the roadway. Last week, the Sioux City staff was good enough to go out there and wash that intersection for us.
Did.
I'm trying to get bids for a power broom that we could put on our trucks so we can attend to that on a more daily basis. But I think this is a piece of equipment that's not currently in our fleet that we need to look at getting, where we got an 11-to-12-foot wide power broom that can do a lane in a single pass with a vehicle big enough not to get run over by traffic. We have a 6-foot power broom right now on our skid steer loader. It's very slow, and with people coming around from Sergeant Bluff, I don't want to see our staff hit out there or people put at risk while we're trying to do that. It is becoming an issue that I think we're gonna have to acquire a piece of equipment here yet this fiscal year, and.
I spent quite a bit of time out there yesterday, and that's gonna be a fight for the next year and a half, two years. I don't, you're gonna have to be out there every day. The amount of traffic now is just phenomenal.
Yes, it is, and it's continuous all day, every day. Ready-mix trucks are coming at us from two or three different plants, and the plant in the Floyd River Products area is running full bore now, too. That's another area where we're seeing that we're gonna have to be able to do some cleanup and other reasons we're looking at the broom, because debris's coming off those ready-mix trucks onto the road, and that can become, that can become a windshield problem for folks if aggregate gets kicked up at somebody, so.
The windshield gets broken?
We've already spent our equipment allocation, but I'll try and find some money somewhere within the budget, the amendment. I think it's essential that we get something done with that.
I think we're gonna have to come up with some money to keep him going, because it's, it's never-ending.
We have been tracking all of our expenses with, with aggregate applied. That's one of our big expenses right now. I need to visit with probably initially the chair and Dennis, just to visit about whether we can recover some of our gravel cost that we've already expended out there, because we've really depleted District 5's pile at Luton, using most of it on this five-and-a-half, roughly, six miles of road out there, and to the detriment of the rest of their territory. So, it would be good if we could apply some of that money that the board set aside to help us replenish that, because we're going to continue to.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Well, again, you know, you mentioned earlier having to rent a, some sort of a roller or something. In our meetings are with, with the city, you know, they've, they've offered, if they have any equipment that we could, we could use, you should really consult with them to see if they've had something first before you rent.
And we have been.
Have you good.
Yes, and that's why they came out and washed the road for us.
That's great.
The other day, the city's been very helpful to us in the last couple of weeks on, on not only that project, but one other where, where we weren't equipped. We had some winter cleanup to do, and they can now give us some assistance with that, so.
I will be having.
And we reciprocate that with soil plowing and gravel road maintenance that we do for them in some areas as well. So, a lot of that sharing and cooperation is going on, at least between.
Great.
Field services and secondary roads.
I will be having another meeting with them on the 28th of this month on that very issue and some other issues, too, that I think is gonna benefit that project down there. So, you know, you will be involved in that discussion along with Dennis and the other supervisors. So, I think it's gonna be, we do have a very, very, I think, good working relationship now with, with the city and also particularly with CF Industries, too. So, we're gonna get another meeting set with the plant manager down there, too, so he can go over those plans that we reviewed a few weeks ago with you and he and Dennis. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 10. That's the general obligation capital loan notes. Dennis, can you kind of brief us with that and take us through that situation?
Can I let Mike go ahead a little bit here? What this is for, to finish our final, final processes to get the loan from the bank we've selected for the low bid, which was bid out for our capital projects this prior year.
So, basically, what we got here is just all the paperwork needs to be finished up. Approval for the, or a tax-exempt certificate, since county is tax-exempt. And then, we've got paperwork from the bank needs to be signed by the chairman.
Okay.
Finalizing loans, so.
So, I guess the first item is approval of tax exemption certificate.
Move it.
Second. Okay. Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, the other item is a resolution to approve the author, authorizing a form for loan agreement and authorizing the, providing of insurance capital loan notes and living taxes to pay the note. Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Anything else? That'll do it. Okay, item number 11 is the discussion and decision on courthouse security adoption This morning, we had a courthouse security meeting with the entire group. We did go over a plan that was submitted a week or two ago by one of our supervisors, and there was much discussion on that plan. And I'd just like to have Jackie make a few comments on the plan, and then we'll go on from there.
Yes, after, I think it was a few weeks ago, we looked at some initial recommendations from the Security Committee concerning courthouse security. And actually, after kind of a sleepless night, I just thought the plan was expensive. We had to cut out cameras. I knew we were looking at two other buildings in the future to provide security. So, I just submitted another plan to the chair, and that had some different ideas, and it is, I believe, lower cost. It's a little familiar to our taxpayers. Along with being a strong supporter of courthouse security, I feel that my, one of my other duties, as all of ours, is to be a good steward of taxpayer dollars as well. So, I just put some thoughts on paper, assuming they would probably be tweaked some, but it was a starting point and seemed to be a little more step-by-step as opposed to what we'd been seeing before. It was just kind of a general throw-out of figure without a lot of specificity. So, it probably has caused a bit of a discussion, but some of the reason of, I know, why did it come so late? Well, I wasn't on the Security Committee. So, the timing was, once it was looked at at this board, what do you, what do you do? I mean, I put some thoughts down. I'd assumed it would probably have to be considered by the chair if it was even gonna go any farther, in which direction to disseminate the information, thinking we do have committees in process. Things generally go back to a committee to be reviewed out of respect for all the time and effort, and I, and I do appreciate the many hours that everyone has spent on it. So, I didn't want to step on anyone's toes either, but at the same point, I just felt it upon maybe myself and this board and every citizen in this county to just throw out another option that I thought worked, and it's patterned after Black Hawk County has a similar system in place, and it's worked for them for 10 years. So, I just glad it made it this far, you never know, and I support it, and I think we can make it work, and I guess I would make a motion to adopt it if we're ready to do that. So, I moved to adopt it.
Okay. Is there a second? If not, I'll second the motion.
Pardon me?
What is this?
Uh, the proposal.
Well, the proposal is, was sent to the committee, and it's now.
Do you want me to go over? Do you have a copy in print? I can go over with you.
Well.
I don't think it was in the homework packet.
Well, it was.
It wasn't in the homework packet.
No, but it was distributed to the, to the committee, because that was there last Tuesday, and that was their first opportunity to look at it after the meeting last Tuesday. And then, we had the meeting this morning to determine whether this plan was going to be acceptable, not acceptable, by the committee and by the group as a whole, and that's why I put it on the agenda for decision. When committee information goes out, it goes to the committee.
You just presented, you made a motion. Without even going over.
Well, we can, we can, well, no, no, just a minute, Pat. We can go over the plan. We can go over the plan, we went over the plan in the committee, and the entire plan, and we can do that now if you want to, and I'm certainly happy to do that. So Mr. Van Bruggen, did you have a comment?
James Van Bruggen, Taxpayers Research Council, 516 Nebraska Street. Can I ask why there was nothing in the agenda packet about anything at all?
Because when I sent the information out to the committee only, that was for their perusal and for their, to look at for the meeting this morning.
Okay, so you've had, you said this was submitted to you a week ago, two weeks ago?
Probably two weeks.
Okay.
About two weeks ago.
So in the whole two weeks, the Security Committee couldn't meet until two hours before this meeting?
No, we had the meeting planned for the 7th, for today, and we set that meeting about three weeks ago.
But there's a lot of interesting ideas in here, and without any transparency until 15 minutes before this meeting, the public, the county employees have no opportunity to even digest what is in this plan.
Well, basically, the plan is not so unlike the other ideas. The only difference, really, is that there won't be a hiring of a sergeant. The supervisors would oversee the plan, and there would probably be one less management-type person. There will be a full-time person at the door filling one of the positions. The other position, I guess, would be manned by part-time people. So it's not a big difference than what was before. It's just, although the cameras are back in, those had been taken out. So I do agree that the cameras are back in, the chairlift is in there.
Still, 15 minutes before the meeting provides no opportunity for anybody to digest this information.
Well, it's longer than 15 minutes.
No, we got handed to it 15 minutes before the meeting started, George.
You did.
How is that public transparency?
Well, it is, because we, the committee made the recommendation. The committee, the committee met this morning, and that they had the information prior to this meeting for at least four to five days or longer.
So this committee, so that committee got the information, but the public and everybody else in this building did not, right? That's what you're saying?
Well, Mr. Chair, this is, I mean, I certainly, we waited this long.
You wanna wait another week?
You wanna wait another week? I could, I have no problem.
Well, this plan is.
I'm just glad it made it this far, and we started a discussion.
It's an expanded plan, and it's a plan that gives us more flexibility than the plan originally proposed.
Because I have no idea if this is good or bad, no idea, okay?
And you may not wait a week.
Without the opportunity to review it for a week.
Well, there's pros and cons on either side, and we discussed that in our committee, and we went through those things. One of the, they thought was one of the disadvantages is that if this is going to be done by the Board of Supervisors, that would these people be able to carry weapons? We said yes, because we are going to hire individuals that are qualified to carry weapons and in the courthouse and be former law enforcement officers. That was one of the major concerns.
Well, I'm glad the Security Commission or Committee got time to digest this, but the public has not.
Well, they did.
What, who's gonna watch the cameras?
No one.
Well, that's not true.
What they do in Black Hawk is they have those, and then they keep them for a year, and then if they need to go back and review tapes, they're not meant to be manned. So I don't think we can afford to hire someone right now to watch them, but that's what they do. So I just put it in the plan, because if something should happen, you have to go back and review the tape, it's there. It's better than having nothing.
Second concern I have is, we're gonna supervise security this board?
I thought it could go under Human Resources, perhaps.
That makes no sense.
Does this function a little bit?
Well, no, 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 Pat, please stop that. It's not dysfunctional, it is workable. This plan is modeled after the Waterloo Plan. The original plan didn't have anyone watching the cameras either, Mark. Sheriff?
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in. First of all, thank the committee. I noticed that Judge Hoffmeyer's here and Lisa McNeil from the courts, and we spent a lot of time working on courthouse security, and I think it's been discussed for 20 years since my last check. So we've probably kicked that can down the road long enough. And we've gotten to a point where it's right here at the doorstep, and I think the whole committee would agree, we don't want to see it lost. And I believe that's, I don't want to speak for Judge Hoffmeyer, but that was his sentiments. It's been there before, and then it got lost. But the concerning thing for me is Sheriff, who oversees, in my opinion, the courts, courthouse security, or should, at the same cost, and I don't know why you have different facts, but Mr. Butler, August 2013, had it at $188,457 for our personnel cost. And that's well under the $250,000. It allows us $62,000 in discretionary costs, such as the cameras and equipment, wheelchair lift, and all those things, but it also gives us additional manpower. And I just think it's, in my opinion, that law enforcement, the sheriff, is best to deal with security issues and not Human Resources or the board. I think that is just putting undue burden on the new director of HR, putting it on the board. If you were here every day, maybe, but you're not here every day. And so we are here every day, and I feel an obligation. You often speak of Black Hawk County. I spoke with the sheriff, and what he, they have similar, he does not have anything to do with courthouse security.
I thought he oversaw it and they contracted it up.
He doesn't, since they did not, he did not have anything to do with it. He said, then, that's your decision, and I would agree with him. It is your decision. What he has control over is the courts, and that's where he has his deputies in the courts. We don't even have that luxury, but we are trying our best to provide more deputies' arrival at the courts on a daily basis.
Well, you do have.
Kevin Horsley, one.
Courtroom.
They have five. They have five deputies. So our, my contention and the staff, we've looked at this plan, and for the same amount of money, the same exact money, now you've added a camera, we can add camera. The reason we took that out was we discussed at that meeting, or at least I brought up, the fact that let's maybe put cameras in at a different time. You will not find a camera for $7,500. Yes, maybe a camera, and nobody looks at it, then why spend the money? You know, these are things that I believe that expert field would be in the share. You were an audiologist, right?
Speech pathologist.
Speech pathologist, and I wouldn't pretend to do your job. And I think in some sense.
Well, Sheriff, with due respect, I'm not pretending to do your job. I just put in a plan that was an alternative version that basically staffs that front door with the same personnel. It will either be retired law enforcement. I would like to see the full-time position given to a veteran with military or security experience. I'm pretty sure that's the same personnel that would have manned it regardless of who does it. And quite honestly, I might ask you then, do, why can you not assume the supervisory positions under someone who is already supervising? I just don't understand why we would hire someone to supervise two people at the front door. And when I heard three to four people at the front door, I just thought, it seemed excessive to me, and I'm looking at the big picture, because we have two more buildings we have to do. This is expensive.
Right, and those, that's why I'm glad, because we can discuss that, and that's, I think, what James said, should have discussion, because two people at the front door, they need a break, they need a lunch, they work nine hours. So there's a relief factor. That's why we had all these people, there's a rotation. Unfortunately, you didn't get a chance to go to the federal building.
I did go to the federal building, yes.
They have nine, and they're relieving each other all the time.
And that would be in place in this proposal also. It's not saying that it would not be available, because we'd have a pool of part-time folks in this proposal, too, Sheriff.
But your proposal only has two on.
Well, it has two on, but we would still have the potential and the ability, based on the organizational part of this, to have a pool of part-time individuals plus a full-time supervisor that has a, that is qualified as a law enforcement officer, along with the part-time people.
And so I can just say this, ultimately, it's your choice, how you want to do it. I think we have a better plan for the same amount of money, and I, Sheriff, please.
You've gotta quit saying for the same amount of money, because that.
Exactly the same amount of money. But you tell me why.
There's a $40,000 savings in the team leader. Between a sergeant and what's called a team leader here.
You have.
A sergeant is roughly $80,000 to $90,000. Well, we talked about those. Here, we're looking at 57, I don't know, so how, you keep seeing the same money, and I just don't see that.
Right, because you have factored in a number of things here. You have FICA. Under our plan, we don't have FICA, we don't have to pay FICA, we don't have to pay IFRS, because they're reserves. And we've explained that before to me.
Right, with the part-time people, right.
And so that's.
You would, you would with the full-time individual.
Right, well, because he's a deputy.
Oh, yeah.
Right. Ultimately, listen, I want you to understand this. I don't want to see this get thrown away, but what I'm concerned about is how it's going to be run. Ultimately, that's up to you. If you feel confident in the mere fact that you can oversee this security detail better than the sheriff, then that's your choice. But I truly believe if you budget $250,000, and that's what it is budgeted, we're gonna provide better, more adequate security for the same price. So why you wouldn't use those that are already there and experts in that area? It's puzzling. It's just, I'm not sure.
Well, I do disagree on the same, on the same price. I, that, I mean, I don't think it's the same price.
Well, I'm.
And I do think you, I don't think, you know, I think you could do a very good job with this, too, Dave, but I think it is much more expensive. I would like to see you if it, ultimately, if it goes a different direction, which this is discussion, I guess, today. I would like one of your supervisors to assume supervisory duty of these individuals and not have to hire another administrator.
No, we're not, we're not.
Well, you're hiring a sergeant that is just gonna oversee.
We're bringing the sergeant over, he does the scheduling and all that, because by contract, so you understand that.
I, see, I do understand that, too. And that was the other reason that I wanted to look outside of what other, and look at some other options, so.
And that's fine, I mean, like I said, that is fine. But contractually, if it's a deputy that we put over here and he's supervising people by contract, then he is paid acting sergeant wages. That's why we're budgeting for that.
And we have no problem with that, except that, you know, your original proposal was bringing, creating a new sergeant position.
Right, it's, well, that's what it would be, you'd have to, we'd take a sergeant away.
And that's where, that's where we have the issue.
But it's under the budget. It's still in that same amount of money, George, that's.
You know.
It is not any different. It's the same, under $250,000, it allows you $62,000 of that wheelchair lift for maybe cameras and those things, but that's where it's at, so.
Well, I'd have to see on paper that it's the exact same cost.
It's not, I mean, I, there's no way the costs are the same.
Right there.
Let me.
Sheriff, ask.
Now, with all due respect, you're not counting FICA and IFRS, because you say it doesn't have to be paid. Wage an hour is telling us it does have to be paid. I've gotta go with wage an hour instead of your, you know, what you believe. Anyway, there's probably a $40,000 savings going this route.
Oh, I see.
I'm ballparking the figure.
Disagree, wholeheartedly, but that's all right, we haven't agreed on a lot of it.
I'm not a fan of courthouse security to begin with, but there is cost savings here.
You budgeted $250,000.
Doesn't matter what we budgeted, it's what you spend.
And we are under that amount of money. We are under that amount of money. We are $188,457.
That is strictly for personnel.
Exactly. And I have $62,000 for discretionary funds, Larry. Now, you.
No, no, that's not discretionary funds, that's the.
What is it?
The budget is what you think it's gonna cost.
Right.
Because this is new for everybody, we don't know what the costs are on a number of items.
Okay.
That doesn't mean you spend it.
No, I, pretty sure.
If you don't have to.
Right.
So if your personnel costs are $188,000, here we're looking at, and these figures are short, I'm sure, here we're looking at $112,000. So there's $70,000 right there.
That's.
But let's say these costs are $10,000 more, you're still got $60,000 disparity. Now, like I say, if you're saying, well, you don't have to pay FICA, you don't have to pay IFRS, and we have wage an hour telling us we do, then you've gotta add that into your figures. So now your figures get larger.
Well, the only reason we say that is because that's what we've been told, and that's how reserves are paid, and that's under the plan. And then lastly, I'm just gonna say this, one of the last things is, you talk about retired law enforcement and this and that. What authority or what, are you swearing them in? I'm just curious.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think I can do that.
We should stop directing questions directly at the board.
But that's fine.
But, you know, you know that you would probably have to swear those officers in.
I, I don't think that would be a good life.
And you're saying that that's not.
No, the sheriff, I talked with Tony Thompson.
Position for us to be in.
Yeah, the sheriff said he does not have anything to do with the security, because he does not want that liability.
And that's unfortunate. I do feel that, you know, sheriff or court or the supervisors can do as good a job on this as anybody else, because we do have the public's interest at heart here.
I think I do, yeah.
We really do, and we need the cooperation and collaboration of law enforcement on it.
But I wouldn't want the, listen, who's gonna get sued when something happens there? And I'm not overseeing them, I'm not responsible for them.
Just like always, Sheriff, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna come to the board. I mean, it's not, it's not happening to defend whatever elected official in the property has that, so, that's where it's gonna, that's where it's gonna come to, whether you have it or a department head has it. If something happens, the board is gonna be sued, and we have to do the protection.
Right, and that's fine, but the sheriff will be odd, because I'm not going to take that responsibility. If I'm not gonna oversee the people, why would I want to take on that responsibility?
I really, I really feel that we should table this, because I don't think it's gonna make it today, and I don't want it to go down either, because this is well overdue. I think there needs to be another committee meeting and some of this ironed out. I cannot see supervisors supervising a security group. It just doesn't fit into my concept of what's there. In addition to the camera thing, if we're gonna put cameras up, nobody looks at them.
I think they, and just because I got the information, they look at them once a year, they review them. It's just bad.
Cameras are just.
It's just bad.
Well, you know, in the original proposal a few weeks ago, Mark, there were no cameras at all. That was the recommendation, there was no cameras at all.
Are we falling apart, or what?
Something's happened. Pat?
I, you know, I don't want to talk about the security policy. I want to talk about the process. The first thing I want to do is apologize to Human Resources. I made that statement, I'm frustrated, and that, we've had problems with them before, but I'm going to, I'm going to do the new director to do that. But this is the first time I've heard that you were gonna give it to Human Resources. And that's what I'm gonna talk about, the process, because I've heard nothing but rumor and innuendo about this security plan that you have. I call it the secret plan. I asked Dennis about it a week ago, or two weeks ago, and he said he wasn't at liberty to tell me anything about it. And so this is the first time we've heard about it here. I'm an elected official. We have people that we're concerned about. I'm talking about the process. I'm sorry to be critical publicly, but this has not been transparent, and that's what I'm concerned about.
Well, I completely disagree with you.
George, there was nothing in the whole.
Pat, you're welcome to your opinion.
Well, I'm gonna withdraw my motion or make another motion to table it for a week.
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We will have it on for next week.
Mr. Chairman, do you think you will? Mr. Chairman, do you think you will involve the Security Committee before then? I mean, do you feel a need to take this back and work any...
Well, I do. I think that we're going to have to schedule another meeting with the Security Committee involved being the same players as we did this morning and come back with a recommendation on which way we're going to go with this thing. Because as I've said this morning and also the judges, we do not want to reach a point where we're going to cause this to go down in flames as it has in the past. And it just could happen. So, as of this moment, I will say that we will have another security meeting at 8:00 a.m., same place, same time, next Tuesday.
Will the reinformation in the homework regarding the issue?
It'll be the exact same information that the committee had this week and it will be in everybody's packet.
Well, I think you ought to have that committee meeting before Tuesday so there's something available. Should be like on Thursday of this week if you're going to do it next week. Otherwise, we need to put it off for two weeks.
Case of change.
I mean, if the committee changes the whole thing and we bring it in like today, then nobody knows.
Judge?
I think it... Dwayne Hoffmeyer, Chief Judge, Third Judicial District. I think it's inappropriate to call it a committee. It's a work group. The Security Committee that Munson chaired is now part of the Courthouse Security Committee. This is a work group of people, law enforcement, county attorney, U.S. Marshal Service, judges, juvenile court officers that are part of this process. And it's the same group, Mark, that you chaired some time ago, only now it's called a work group because our committee has been assumed as part of the court building security. So, I think the key problem that I see here is the Sheriff needs a written proposal so you can compare the two offers. There are multiple ways of doing courthouse court building security all around the state, Black Hawk County, law enforcement. And I think ultimately, you are the decision makers. And the decision maker will be is cost versus the power to arrest or carry a firearm, wherever that lands. I don't know if having another security work group committee is the answer to this or is it that you just need the information from the Sheriff's so you have what you're going to... It's your decision. This work group is just going to say, "Here's the advantages and here's the disadvantages." The advantages always will be carry a firearm and power to arrest compared to can they carry a firearm at a potential lower cost. I think it is... I sat in on that group. I believe it is a lower cost unless I see something from the Sheriff that says differently. But there are trade-offs with that. And so, I don't know what you're expecting from this work group, but it seems to me that, you know, ultimately, you need something from the Sheriff in writing that commits them to figures and then you just need to make a decision. So, I'm not in favor of the work group meeting again because I don't know if they would be anything constructive that would come out of that. Now, George and Larry, you sit on that. Maybe you think that you could gain some knowledge from that. And if so, I'm willing to do that.
Okay. Well, I would go with your suggestion. And I would like from you, Sheriff, you know, a written proposal as we had here to be presented to the... And, you know, to the entire Board so that we could put it back on the agenda for next week, which would be in your packets.
Yeah, all that's my idea is that we have items.
Okay, very good. Good. Are there any other items? Any group wishing to make a presentation on an item not on the agenda? Very known, I would move to adjourn the meeting. Oh, Jessica, David?
Yeah, I'm supporting. I just wanted to give you all a brief update, a report on my recent trip to DC with the SULAN Chamber and the Tri-State delegation for the 60th Annual Washington, DC Conference and State Reception. Essentially, my time up there, I spent meeting with all of Iowa's congressional members and also with the deputy under the Secretary for the Department of USDA Rural Development Essentially, outside of the SULAN Chamber's agenda items that they were lobbying for, I met one-on-one with congressional members and their staffers to discuss issues pertinent to rural Woodbury County economic development. And the items that I brought up and discussed were issues related to FEMA flood map revisions and flood insurance rates, also the proposed budget cuts to USDA rural development programs, and also brought to their attention the fact that here in Woodbury County, we have some applications through the Woodbury County Rural Electric Cooperative going to USDA rural development for a Red Lake grant, which essentially creates a revolving loan program that can be used to support projects in rural Woodbury County. And so, essentially, I just wanted to say that I feel like it was an invaluable opportunity to meet with our congressional members and their staffers who handle issues related to economic development. And I thought it was also a great opportunity to network with members of the Tri-State SULAN delegation. And the time spent really provided an opportune time to, I feel like, improve or enhance intergovernmental and private sector relations, you know, with my department. So, I appreciate the opportunity for going and just want to let you know that we're out there working hard.
Good. A lot of work, isn't it?
Yeah.